We've returned to open session.
At this time, is there any public comment?
I do not have any and there's nobody signing the chief.
Okay. All right, then that brings us to new business, which is the confirmation of the consolidated election canvas results. So I have the results of the election here. There were four seats open and four candidates. So what has been presented to me shows that David Barsati, Stephanie Bassanet -- Stephanie, I'm sorry, you're gonna --
Gun.
Bassanet, yes, I'm sorry. Gunn, Daniel Hunt, and Joel Marhol have been elected to board members for four-year terms. And so I think we can move forward with that. Is that correct? Okay. Let's see. So then the next item is old business, which is the teacher appreciation proclamation. The proclamation I have in front of me here has a lot of whereas in it, a lot of legal language, a lot of good language. And I should say as well, I'm very glad that we have a lot of teachers here tonight to hear this. It's definitely a very good proclamation that talks about the value of the teachers and the flexibility that's been demanded of them this year. This has been a year like no other. And definitely, as a district, we appreciate our teachers greatly so. We have banners out in front of all the schools proclaiming that. We have a banner out at the district, well, not district, the --
Guthrie Park.
Guthrie Park, thank you. And definitely, we're glad that teachers are here tonight and we, by all means, definitely appreciate the work that you've done this year, the work that you've done in the past, and look forward to continuing forward with that in the coming years. All right. So, let's see, is that something we vote on? It's old business?
We don't have to take action. I think the board wants to make any other comments, but we wanted to make it, you know, known and through this proclamation.
I'll just say as a parent, having to deal with everything this year, I'm not sure I could have worked on multiplication with my daughter at home. So, you know, it sounds minimal, but working through pauses, changes, adapted schedules, your job is never easy to begin with. So teaching through a pandemic and with your own children possibly at home and their changes, I really appreciate, you know, besides being a parent, just the work that you've been through. Teaching through a mask, trying to smile, connect to your children is so important. And I know you're doing it with your eyes and we thank you for it. So, thank you.
I was just gonna add on. I started my volunteer career in District 96 years ago with the Parent Teacher Organization, supporting teachers, working with them to help make the student experience like the best that we can offer. And I knew then, working with them, that we had one of the best staffs around. And I, after this year, it's couldn't be more clear. We are so lucky for our teachers and our staffs and our administrators. And I just truly hope you feel appreciated this week because I think the whole community is appreciating you.
Very much so, very much so. All right. Let's see. So at this time, we will move forward to the appointment of a president pro tem until the election of a new president. Who would like to be president for five minutes?
I'll do it. I'll be president for five minutes. Two minutes, probably.
Now guessing, Linda, you would have to read the oath of office.
All right. Oh, you didn't tell me that part.
Here we go. Okay, great.
No, I don't remember this part.
Yes, you do have to read that because you are the --
Wait, do you guys have to vote on this pro tem?
All in favor, say aye.
We're gonna have everyone.
All right, so my newly-elected position here, remind me what I'm supposed to do now.
So I believe that, what, so Stephanie, can we have you join us?
Dan, I think the four of us should stand.
Yeah, it's all four of you, right?
Yes.
I think probably over by the microphone.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. That's a great idea.
Stephanie, you'll learn quickly. This microphone doesn't amplify, it just goes to the live feed, to the YouTube feed.
All right.
And I need to say this to everybody.
And they repeat it to me? Is that how we --
I think last time I looked and you all read it aloud together.
Oh.
And Linda's asked.
Yes, and Kathy has one for you.
Right. This is long enough to read.
So I don't need to do anything, then?
I actually think you administer the oath of office, but it means that they read it. So maybe you go stand over there with them.
Oh, all right.
Stand, administer, I mean, standing.
You would come up, you ask us to put up our hands and then we read it.
That's all they have to do, all right? So if everybody can raise their right hand. And before taking your seat on the board, you will take the following oath of office if you guys would like to read it in unison.
All right there.
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye. Dan's one.
Joel Marhol. Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge duties of the office of member of the Board of Education at Riverside School District 96 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek adhering before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has the legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. I shall foster with the board's extensive participation of the community formalized goals, defined outcomes, and set the course for Riverside School District 96. I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students at our community school or schools to advance the vision of Riverside School District 96. And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision of the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. The board --
Oh, I think that's, I think that's it. Well, congratulations.
All right, I like it. Everybody has enough stuff printed out for me to read makes it easier.
So now Stephanie has a seat over there. You are officially at the table now, so.
I'll just grab my bag.
I'm not looking for your nameplate.
It's right away, man. Well, congratulations. Welcome aboard.
All right, so next.
Wait, I think that's me, no, Dan.
Oh, you're right.
Don't I get to talk? All right, everybody, next on the agenda. Next on the agenda, organizational business. The first item up is the election of officers president for a two-year term. So my term's about to expire.
I would like to nominate Dan Hunt as the next president for the next two years.
I second the nomination.
I accept the nomination.
Is there any other discussion?
No.
All right.
There's a roll call vote for that.
All right, Kathy, will you call the roll call?
Okay. Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Barsati?
Aye.
Mr. Muirhead?
Aye.
Mrs. Gunn?
Aye.
Mrs. Kleiber?
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
All right.
Back to you, Dan.
Back to me, thank you. All right.
I like it when it's five minutes long.
Let's see, so next is the election of a vice president for a two-year term. Is there a nomination for vice president?
I will, go ahead.
No, you go. I was just gonna say Linda because she's upstate, she was like filling in and she knows all the procedures.
Oh, as we just clearly saw, that's not true.
I don't mind if it's, you know, rolling.
I mean, I've been in that role for a while, so if there's anybody else who would like to take it, I'm certainly willing.
Did you have any other?
I can second, I will second that nomination. All right. Linda, do you accept?
Sure.
Okay. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Barsati?
Aye.
Mr. Muirhead?
Aye.
Mrs. Gunn?
Aye.
Mrs. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
And then there is the position of secretary for a two-year term. Are there any nominations for secretary?
It's a really cool tape recorder associated with the --
We are all clamoring, huh?
I could get a stamp.
A stamp too, yes.
That's true.
Yeah. I didn't get a stamp. I'm gonna give you.
You don't get a stamp.
No.
Are there any nominations on the floor?
I will nominate Wesley Muirhead.
I'm second.
You could say no.
All right. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, and Jill, you seconded?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Barsati?
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
Mrs. Gunn?
Aye.
Mrs. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Muirhead?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
All right. All right. That brings us to the appointment of committee chairs. So first on the list here is education committee. I propose that we have a co-chair agreement with Linda Murphy and Sherri Kleiber as co-chairs. For finance committee, I propose that David Barsati is the, become the finance chairman, And for policy committee, I propose that Stephanie Gunn is the policy chair. And for facilities committee, I propose that Joel Marhol is the chair. And Joel, did we want to discuss a co-chair or what was your thoughts on that?
I think to some degree, David and I are going to work together with both finance and facilities.
And then next is the personnel committee. I propose that Wesley Muirhead is, be, continue on as the personnel committee chair. All right. Hopefully, everyone accepts.
I really appreciate Wesley, all you've done with organization and scheduling for everything. I think you've really tightened up procedures, just so thank you this year.
You don't have to vote on that, right? It's just the board president appointment?
Yeah. All right. Next is the PTA/PTO representative. Linda, did you wish to continue on?
I mean, I'd be happy to continue on. I also have been in that role for six years, so I personally think it would be good to get a new voice. I mean, I'm a big proponent of making sure that we're changing positions and that that important group has access to somebody else. I think they've known me. It's a lot of the same parents on that committee for a while now, so I would do it if that's, if that's, you know, where the board would like to go. But I also think it's important to maybe get another voice on the table.
The meeting's about once a month, we meet with a parent leadership team. It's the PTA and PTO presidents from each of the five schools. And Linda has done a great job, and I know she said she'd be happy to open the door if somebody else was interested in joining the group.
Anyone like to sit in on the PTA/PTO?
The meetings are usually the Monday after the regular board meeting for about an hour and a half on a Monday morning. I know this year it's been a very valuable group to gather feedback from, so I'm happy to do it again, though.
I've been on, I've been on it, you wanna rotate off since you've been doing it for a while, but, I mean, if you're looking to pass it off.
It's not that I'm looking to pass it off, I just definitely think that, you know, that it's good to get different voices in the room, so, you know.
I'd be happy to step in so you can rotate off.
Okay, and I can certainly, yeah, I can certainly be a backup if you have, you know, obviously, a conflict. Thanks.
Next is the EdRed representative. I think what previously that was, it's not listed here.
It was Jeff and I.
It was Jeff and Joel, yeah, alternating. Do you guys meet much on that?
More paying attention to what the agenda items are, but it's a lot of legislative reporting.
I think in terms of actual attendance, you can probably make it as much or as little.
I've been to a few of their actual in-person meetings, not this year, but in other years. They tend to not have a lot of people attending in person. They put out a pretty detailed news bulletin that is attending to the legislative issues that in particular, you know, impact or affect the suburban school districts in our area. So I think it's important to be connected and have membership in that group, but in terms of the time commitment, you know, I know it's something everyone tunes into, naming a particular pet or liaison probably makes sense too.
Martha's correct, really, that their summary is the most valuable thing that comes out of it.
And all board members get the summary, so it's not, it's not a lot. I mean, I'd be happy to fill that position if nobody else, if you needed to move off of it or if we're looking to change it up.
What I could see is if there ever was an issue that it was of particular importance, maybe Riverside District 96, that we might want to be more vocal around an issue or something. So maybe it's good to have that appointed liaison and --
Or if you continue to like to do it, Joel, I mean, I don't.
Do you anticipate they'll have any in-person meetings in the future?
I would think yes, you know, we don't know, right? I mean, it's, yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to know.
Yeah.
I would be glad to have somebody available.
I can be your backup.
Unless anybody else overhears.
I was gonna say, I mean, I'm happy to, I don't want to bet off more than I can chew. I don't know if that ties in well with some of the work of the policy committee or if there's potential overlap.
You know, I was actually thinking that, but I didn't want to.
No, and this is the first I've heard about this representative, so I think, I mean, it might make more natural.
I think that would be great. I did too. No, 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 yes. Put that on you, yeah. But yeah, that'd be great.
So is that, so Linda and Stephanie are doing it together or is it just Stephanie?
I think Stephanie can take it if you need a backup, please just let me know, right?
Yep.
I think that really does tie well in with the policy position.
Yeah. I don't want to put something on you, so.
No, I appreciate it, just listening to the description of what it was. So that sounds like a natural connection, possibly. All right, thank you all.
Okay. Then next is the IASB representative. I think, David, you've been that for the past four years or so?
I have. More just their deepening up. Going on, having these meetings once a year and only gone once, and that was for something that we wanted to vote on. But, I mean, I'm more than happy to do it. Obviously, there hasn't been much going on this past year because I don't know about it. But I'm happy to continue on if that's what is or rolled off, somebody else wants to take on, take it on, but.
Works for me, yeah.
All right. Yeah, okay. David, we can continue. The REC representative.
I had expressed an interest in that, Dan.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. The Behavioral Intervention Committee.
That was usually me. I wouldn't mind doing it again. I actually think it ties well into those talks we have at education committees, just about new procedures that we're implementing in classrooms or not. And I think, I'm happy, unless someone really wants it, I think it's actually really interesting and I appreciate Pam's work.
And that group meets about once a year.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a lot of commitment, which is better with my mom's health schedule. I'm not trying to like pick that, but it is really important. It's just.
Okay. All right. Sherri on that.
Unless somebody really feels strongly, you know, much.
It doesn't sound like it, so it sounds like we'll, Sherri, we'll keep you on there. For technology steering.
That was, that was you and I for a while. I mean, happy to keep doing it. I mean, if somebody else wants.
I'm happy as well. I know I had a meeting conflict at one point that may not be the case anymore. I don't know, Don, we'll have to get back and see, see how we can all work that out. But I'm happy to continue as well.
I also know this past year, as with a lot of things, we've been sort of just scrambling, just get by, so.
David, we will continue to tag-team on that if that's okay. All right. I think that is it. All right, so that brings us to the establishment of regular meeting dates, times, and places, which essentially, we're continuing on the previous practices and previous board dates, board meeting dates that have been announced. Is there a motion that the Board of Education approve the regular business meeting dates, time, and locations as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay. Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Barsati?
Aye.
Mr. Muirhead?
Aye.
Mrs. Gunn?
Aye.
Mrs. Kleiber?
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Gases.
So let's see, so I believe that's the only action item, or wait, no, there is.
Yeah.
Okay, so is there a motion that the board continue to operate under the present board agreements and boards and superintendent agreements? So moved.
Kathy, can you call the roll?
Really quickly.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Add a little discussion here. So these are the board agreements and the expectations. This is the one we're talking about, right? Okay.
Yes.
That we've always reviewed and agreed to during like a day-long meeting. And I really, I would request that we do that this summer again. I think with the pandemic last year, we obviously, we couldn't, but I think seating a new board is a great opportunity to review those. And I think there's a lot of things in there that I think we need to really discuss as we're, you know, in the midst of a pandemic and new things are happening and new policies and laws might be coming around. I just think it's a really important thing to discuss, a lot of the factors in there, so, and to make sure that we do agree on it. And, I mean, I think we do agree on it, but I want to make sure we all understand clearly what we're talking about in regards to some of those agreements and expectations.
Yeah, that did was very logical that we spent, I know it wasn't last summer, but I agree with you. I think it's, it was long, but it was well-spent.
Yeah, and I'd also personally recommend that we get an IASB representative to run the session, and then we can think about certain things we'd really like to focus on in light of the current situation, right?
Yeah, it has changed, so I think I agree with that.
Yeah, the last time we did it, I was new, and I know that was super helpful to me just to kind of have that ability to talk to everybody in a proper setting with it. And we did it, I think we did it really late because of other things going on at summer centers, like in October, November. But we, if we could find a day to do it in more like a July, August timeframe, over before school starts, that'd probably be.
Yeah, I think it's pretty imperative that we do, personally. And I do think it needs to be in the summer before the school starts, school year starts. We need to, I know everybody's lives are busy, but we need to make time for that. So I would just request that.
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
Yeah, it's definitely a great suggestion.
And I'm happy to facilitate that by reaching out to our IASB representative.
Yeah, do you think they have the same person? Do you think they're still available or has it changed?
No, I think there's been some change. So I have to go back. We had actually worked with somebody from the South Cook area because there was some transition in West Cook, so I think there's a new person in West Cook. And I'll do a little bit of research on, you know, if the South Cook person is still there.
Yeah, I'm not sure it matters if it just, yeah, thanks.
And I'm not saying that I don't agree with any of these board agreements. I think they're really important and valuable and I was, you know, have agreed to them in the past, so I'm hoping that we all agree to them. I just really want to make sure that we sit down and study and really talk about what each, what each item means and what that means as our board member role and how we execute that.
Definitely good to go over that every now and again.
Yeah, definitely.
No, I didn't think they were worried about it.
I just wanted to make it clear in case somebody was like, oh, she doesn't agree. I do agree fully.
Yeah, no, it's okay.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay. Mr. Muirhead?
Aye.
Mrs. Gunn?
Aye.
Mr. Barsati?
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mrs. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Gases.
All right. Next is the authorization of signatories for the board in addition to president and Is there a motion the Board of Education approve the authorization of signatories, namely, vice president for the board in addition to the president and secretary as presented?
I'm, again.
Is there any discussion? I don't know. Linda, have you ever signed anything in the past?
I've never had to execute that note.
Yeah, okay.
But that is standard policy. We've always just done vice president, so.
Yeah, makes sense.
I think it's good to have, you never know, there's an absence or something.
I, I, I hope we don't ever have to, you know, do that, but yes.
I might take a vacation soon.
Yeah, unless you're on vacation, that is. Unless you're on vacation.
Do you have a stamp?
No stamp for me. Please don't order a stamp.
All right. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Mr. Barsati?
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mrs. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Muirhead?
Aye.
Mrs. Gunn?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Gases.
All right. And next item is the authorization of signatories for impressed account and financial reports. Is there a motion that the Board of Education approve the following positions as having authorization as a signatory on the impressed fund account, checks, slash checked, as well as financial reports, sent to the school township treasurer and the Illinois State Board of Education as presented, superintendent, director of finance and operations, and the director of teaching and learning?
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
Just want to check, that is standard procedure?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mrs. Kleiber? Mrs. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Mrs. Gunn?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, the next item is the acknowledgement of appreciation for Mr. Jeff Miller, who has recently just left us as a member of the Board of Education. Uh, Jeff was a member for six years, uh, was president of the Board of Education for four years. Uh, Jeff was, uh, Jeff, I don't know, how many, he probably didn't miss two meeting, too many meetings over the course of your time. Couple, three or four, oh wow. He was always here, I could tell, so. Uh, you know, Jeff is, uh, was always a great resource, uh, for extensive, and famous for extensive research that he would put into any topic before the board. Uh, was always available with, with, uh, sharing that expert knowledge, uh, with the rest of the board and, and always looking out for the best interests of the district. Uh, the algorithm that the district uses to assign students to schools, that was something that Jeff authored on his own time and, I don't know, do you get too many late night support calls on that, Jeff? Uh, yeah, Jeff is, is, uh, been, been a great resource to the board, a great board member, uh, very committed to the district, very giving of his time. Uh, he definitely will be missed.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I would like to second that, uh, you know, Jeff doesn't want to probably sit through this, but, uh, I, I will say, you know, six years ago, when we, when we entered the board at the same time, we were in dire need of some, some leadership and you really stepped up into a tough position that took a lot of time and a lot of your energy. Um, and you, you were completely dedicated and, uh, put the district first all the time. So I really appreciated, um, your effort, you know. You really, your leadership really helped us through a, a tough time there, so, um, thank you.
No, I, I absolutely agree with that. That was, that was probably one of the most difficult times to change into that leadership position, uh, just based on everything that was happening and providing just a calm voice was really valuable. Um, and allowing us to just take a, a moment and just listen to everybody and to get teachers and administration and board all working together was actually extremely helpful and positive and I appreciate your leadership and of course, all the research that you do and data-driven, um, focused decision-making. I appreciate, of course, every year, we've been through so many years, so thank you so much for all of your time. It's so much time, especially with the early presidency years. Um, just thank you.
I agree with what Sherry and Linda and Dana have said. Jeff and I have been, become good friends over the past four years and Jeff's, the time you spend to research and get into the details and look at a study and really try and delve into what, what the truth is and to try and bring that to the board and always, your facts are always backed up. Um, I can't say enough about the time that you've dedicated to this, this institution.
I'll just add if I may, Jeff, we didn't have an opportunity to work together, but as you transition off the board, know that, you know, I'm very excited to officially be a part of the D96 board. Um, as of this evening, I have a lot to learn and I hope to get up to speed quickly. And I just look forward to, you know, serving our community in this new capacity. Thank you.
I heard some applause out there.
It's been a pleasure working with you. I still remember you talking to me about joining the board. I was like, do I really want to do this? Yeah, no, I, I, I do sometimes, but, you know, but thank you.
I, I don't know you as well as everybody else, but, uh, you actually just reminded me, Dave, I actually went to Jeff before I thought about running. Go, should I do this? He didn't answer that question. He just gave me his opinion and I, I made my own decision, but, um, no, just watching you over the last two years has been very helpful to myself, getting acclimated with the district and just all the research that you've done, like everybody else says. I won't, I won't pile onto it, but, um, been a good person to observe and, and kind of figure out how to get my own footing on here. So appreciate just through observation and general conversation, um, everything that you provided.
And we know you're gonna miss, miss us on Wednesday nights. You're gonna miss us on Wednesday nights, we know.
That'd be a regular audience member.
Alright. Well, uh, normally I'm told that there, there is a presentation for outgoing board members of a, an engraved bulb. I believe that Jeff specifically requested that this not be made or done. Uh, so, I hope though at least that you will accept this certificate of appreciation. It's not an engraved bulb, but.
Because a frame costs probably like $2 in Michael's.
Actually, Dan, Jeff does get something engraved. He has his name played.
He does have his name played, yes, okay, that's a good point. Laser engraved.
That class is so cool.
Alright.
So, and actually, I, I get my own spot on the agenda. It looks like you're after the REC, so I'm gonna wait and make a few comments, but I know Jeff, you wanted to make a few comments also.
Actually, just for a few, I just, um, yeah, so I, um, I dash these remarks off and then I've been sort of scribbling on them as we sat here, so now I can't read them anymore, so it'd be. But yeah, thanks, I appreciate all of you guys. Um, you've been great to work with and, uh, it's been a, you know, good experience. And also Martha, obviously, has been a fantastic hire. You know, she's been really good before the pandemic, but she's really exceeded anyone's expectations, uh, during the last year. I mean, it's like, the job is very stressful in general. Now I can imagine adding the pandemic on top of it and it's, uh, really appreciate it for that as well. So six years ago, if you asked what I wanted to be talking about at the end of my board experience, uh, I don't think I would have said the coronavirus pandemic. So would have been, you know, wanted to talk about literacy and numeracy and science and music and all their great achievements that we had made in the, in the district, but unfortunately, that's not, you know, what happened. The events in the real world intervened and here we are. So, uh, you know, the board has some core responsibilities. One of them, the, the main one, is providing, you know, excellent education for our kids. And to do that, you know, we have to provide a safe environment, both for the staff and for the students. And in normal times, there's really no tension between the learning and providing that safe environment. But during the pandemic, there's suddenly, we did have this tension because that became, you know, uh, a question. It's harder to educate kids well and to simultaneously make sure that, you know, there was no COVID transmission in the schools. So because of this tension, I think there was a lot of stress that we all felt, you know, during the last year, trying to, finding the right balance between keeping everyone safe and also making sure our students were, were learning as efficiently as possible, as, as well as possible in the circumstances. I'm sure everyone in this room and everyone watching on, you know, anyone who might be watching this, you know, felt similar tension in your own lives and jobs. And so I think I was constantly asking, you know, the question, like, are we doing the right thing? Is this the right choice? Is this the right trade-off to make? And so, yeah, it was kind of a stressful experience from that point of view. For most of the pandemic, you know, my concern was mostly about our staff. And the reason for that is that there's, as we all know, there's a very strong age dependence in terms of the severity of COVID. On average, the older you are, the more severe it could be. So, you know, it's kind of one of the reasons that I think we all favored doing the saliva screening because it was a way of keeping infectious people out of the rooms, out of the buildings, and you know, sort of reducing the risk of transmission. Compared to other districts in our area, I think our, our district has done an exemplary job of educating our kids while keeping students and staff as safe as possible. A lot of the success was the careful planning of Martha and her team. For the lion's share of the credit, you know, just due to the teachers and the support staff who were and are in the trenches every day, working under difficult and ever-changing conditions to educate our kids. And I would say that, and this is obvious, but I don't know how often it's said, is that despite everything we did, um, to make the schools as safe as possible, you know, with masks and distancing and saliva screening and ventilation and all the rest, the reality was that before the vaccines, no matter what we did, there was still some chance that there could be a transmission. You know, that a staff member, for example, could become infected from a, another staff member or a student. So during the biggest wave of the virus during the winter and fall, it took a lot of courage for our staff members to come to school, just because they're putting a personal risk. And I think that was obvious, not stated, but it's really, I really admire that courage, that, you know, dedication. When the vaccines started to arrive in the spring and the winter and spring, that changed everything um, because they offer a way for all of us around the world, in this country and around the world, to get out of this pandemic. It's the only good way. The alternative is, you know, we get something like India. And they also changed the moral calculus, I think, in, in the following way, which is that the availability of the vaccine imposed and, and imposes a pro-social responsibility on all of us to get vaccinated. With the vaccine available, you know, we are sort of obligated to, um, to get it and, and some of the actions we might have taken before, you know, we wouldn't take now because of the vaccine. I'm not talking about, there are some people who can't have the vaccine because they have special medical conditions. I'm not talking about that set, set of people. I'm just talking about people who are eligible to get it. So we know that vaccines prevent serious illness and they prevent the transmission of the disease. So at an individual level, that's obviously sufficient to get one. But on a societal level, to defeat the pandemic requires almost all of us to get vaccinated. And there are two reasons why this vaccination imperative is even more acute in our schools. And the first reason is that, uh, many schools, like our school, have recently gone back to full-time instruction. I think that's become very common. We did it a couple of weeks ago. I think many other schools have done that. But obviously, you get more kids in the school, there's a higher probability of transmission. So that, that's a reason, a really strong reason for vaccination. And then the second reason is that our students are not yet eligible to be vaccinated. Hopefully, that will change over the course of the next few months, but that's still not, still not happening, certainly not for the younger kids. They're still vulnerable to getting and transmitting, uh, COVID in the school or elsewhere. So to summarize, we have a responsibility to make sure everyone who works in the schools, and not just in our district, but everywhere, are vaccinated or isolated from children, or, or isolated from children until the pandemic is over, both for their own safety and that of the students. Now, children, we know, we don't, know children typically do not have severe COVID, but it can happen. There's tens of thousands of kids across the country have been hospitalized with COVID and it's estimated that between 300 and 600 kids have died of COVID in the US since the pandemic started. Now, 600, 300, 600, that's a tiny fraction of the total number of kids in the country. That's what, 44 million? But it still has to be weighed against the unimaginable, you know, loss if something like that were to happen. And none of us are clearly, well, none of us want anything like that to happen, you know, either with a staff member or a teacher, a staff member or a student to become sick. So that requires that, therefore, that we all do our share and get vaccinated. Because otherwise, if we don't do that, we're putting other people at risk, vulnerable people at risk. So, or, or if you don't get, if you can't get vaccinated for some other reason, then there's a, I guess, responsibility on the part of the administration to sort of find you a position where you're not interacting with students until the whole thing is over, basically, or until you can get vaccinated. So when I spoke to Landmark last week, I wanted to say something along the lines of what I just said, but I sort of said it very badly and so I think I offended a bunch of people. And I didn't intend to do that. I apologize for that, but, um, uh, that was, yep, I chose my words poorly. But I stand by the message of what I was trying to say and what I just said, which is that we have a special responsibility in, in schools right now to either get vaccinated for the sake of the staff, for your own benefits, and for the, for the sake of the students, basically, so as not to incur any transmission in the schools. So that's my two bits on, on COVID. And then, you know, the final point I'd like to say, yeah, I'd just like to say that, you know, in general, we have a great community that really values education. It's one of the reasons that many of us live here, I think all of us live here. Uh, we have great volunteer boards who are dedicated to our kids and that's, that's not taken for granted, by the way. I mean, we don't have to look very far around us in our, you know, surrounding area to see that in a lot of places, uh, boards are not sort of focused on kids. It's, they're not, that's not their, that's not the reason they, they exist. But here it is. It's always been, and that's ever, ever since I've been on the board, you know, that's always been people's primary focus, is what's best for kids. Um, so that's a real asset. We have great administrators, uh, led by Martha and her team, who have really excelled in keeping things together this year. Um, and last but not least, we have excellent dedicated teachers and support staff who have really gone above and beyond this year for kids at some risk to themselves. So all the individuals mentioned above have my sincere thanks, so those are my final, final District 96 words. Alright, thank you.
Alright. Thank you, Jeff.
Dan, I think it says superintendent on the agenda. I'm not even sure what that means, but I'm gonna say a few words, so. I want to welcome Stephanie to the Board of Education. I look forward to getting to know you better. I know we're gonna meet next Friday for some informal orientation. You're gonna get a chance to meet our outstanding leadership team as, uh, as Jeff has shared, so, so welcome and, uh, and thank you. Thank you for agreeing to be part of this. And to Jeff, I, I do want to, you know, certainly bid a fond farewell, and I know this has been a challenging week in particular and it's certainly unfortunate to see you depart in sort of the midst of a, a bit of a, a bit of a cloud. Um, but I do want to certainly thank you for your integrity and your intellect and your transparency and your honesty and your mentoring and your leadership, and it's been very much appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Uh, next on the agenda is the Riverside Education Council. I don't know if there were any remarks this evening. I'm guessing no. Uh, and then next is Board of Education. Are there any board member comments? Alright. If not, future meeting dates. Stephanie, pay close attention. Uh, May 19th, the regular business meeting, 7:00 PM at Ames Multipurpose Room. The board will enter into closed session at 6:30 PM if necessary and return to open session at 7:00 PM. Pending board decision on meeting days and times. Alright, and if there is nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.